Come to you this day grateful for another day to serve and worship you, Lord. I ask that you grant us the wisdom to make decisions that you would have us to make, Lord. I thank you for all of those that are on this council and our city staff and our residents, Lord. I thank you for giving us the opportunity to have an opportunity to govern in the way that we do, Lord. I ask that you be with us during this time. Lead, guide, and protect us in all that we do, in Christ's name.
Amen.
Amen.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order if you'll rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to open forum, and we have no request for open forum tonight. So next we will go to the consent agenda and any items to be removed from the consent agenda. Are there any? Okay, if there are none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And a second, all right. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, that's done, and we will move to six. I would like to take the liberty of moving six D up first to work with the schedule. Oh, I'm sorry, I need to read that six D. Public hearing, consider request amendment development plan of a planned development district for approximately three acres, being lots five and six, block four of the Creek Bend subdivision, unit two, generally located at the southeast corner of South Steen Drive and Creek Bend Boulevard. This request has been submitted by SFA Creek Bend Homes LLC's case file PD 2022-03. City Planner, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Lana Hilton, City Planner. This request is again for three acres. It's an amendment to an existing planned development district. This request was initially brought before city council back in August as a zone change request from PD to multifamily. And then based on the feedback from the Planning and Zoning Commission and the desire from the neighborhood to the southeast to maintain the existing PD, the applicant withdrew their application and submitted an application for an amendment to the PD, which is what you're going to be hearing this evening. So just a little background information on how we got here. So this is part of a planned development district that was established in the 1980s and was originally established for a mix of high-density residential uses, including multifamily, townhome, duplexes, and small patio homes. And then over the years, it's been amended. So on the south side of Creek Bend Boulevard, that portion of the PD was amended to allow for fraternity homes. And then on the north side exclusively for sorority houses. And then the most recent amendment was in the 2010s where that interior property on the north side of, oh, sorry, on the south side of Norstein Drive was amended to allow for duplexes. And there's been a couple of builds since then. So just kind of history on the different changes that have been made to the planned development district over the years. And so just to give some more background information on the property, it is designated as multifamily residential on the future land use plan in the 2003 comprehensive plan. And this is the development plan that the applicant has submitted for approval. This essentially shows the improvements that were proposed to the neighborhood initially when this item was first brought forward as a zone change. The applicant is proposing four duplexes in total, which equal eight units on three acres. So you're looking at about a 2.6 unit per acre density. And they're also proposing to maintain a natural buffer area on the south side of the property to provide some more protections for that neighborhood that's located to the southeast, that North Gate subdivision. And so this item was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on August 22nd, and they did vote to approve the item unanimously. This is just some photos of the property. You can see it's undeveloped, vegetated. This is a picture of that vacant fraternity house that's right next door. These are some images of the sorority houses that are on the north side of the subdivision. And in the distance, you can see some of those new duplexes in the upper left-hand corner. So as part of our notification process, we do send courtesy notices to all property owners within 500 feet. We put a sign on the property, and we advertise it in the paper and on our website, and we also do the 200-foot letters for people that live within 200 feet of the subject property. This included 12 notices. We did receive one letter in opposition, and that was from the owner of the office building that's located immediately east. But in his letter, he noted that his main concern was that these would turn into HUD apartments, which obviously they're not. And we didn't have any kind of input or feedback at the actual meeting. So that was the only thing that we got as far as community input. The standards for approval of a planned development district are a little bit different than a zone change because they're specific to the initial concept plan that was approved by city council. So initially, it's just ensuring that whatever was approved on the concept plan is reflected in the development plan. And so it looks at, is the plan consistent with the other adopted uses as part of that PD? It looks at compatibility for the arrangements of buildings, looking at traffic circulation, floodwaters, adjacent neighborhoods, and so on and so forth. And so you'll find staff findings in the staff report, but we do find that they met all the criteria. And so we are recommending approval, and the applicant is also in attendance if the council should have any questions. And so I know I went through that kind of quickly. I'll open it up for questions from the council at this time.
Okay, if it's okay with council, I think we will go into a public comment in this public hearing. Is there any comment from the public? Any questions from the public, either of those? All right, it looks like none. All right, council, any questions for our planner or for the applicant?
I noticed the one letter of opposition was blank.
Oh, so whenever we get a blank letter, we call the applicant. And so they verbally stated over the phone that that was their concern. And so most, a lot of people actually forget to fill out the note piece. And so once we call them, they usually have a reason. So it was a verbal confirmation of their specific concerns.
Thank you.
I appreciate them changing it from the R4 request to the PD. That's very helpful.
Could you remind us, please, what recourse city council has if the planned development plan isn't followed?
Yes, so the final planned development site plan that's used for permitting is actually approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission through a public hearing process. So we'll notify all the property owners, put a legal ad in the paper, and then there'll be another public hearing in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission where the neighbors can come and look at what's being proposed for final construction, and that's another level of scrutiny. And then they have so long to actually build the development, and if they don't, then essentially it expires and they have to start over. Or if they do something after the fact that doesn't reflect the site plan, we can have recourse by coming back and amending the development plan again. So there's a couple of different things that provide some future proofing to make sure that development is compliant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve six D?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, and I'll close that public hearing. All right, we will move to six A and receive an annual report from the Boys and Girls Club of Deep East Texas, Community Services Director Bray. And I would like to disclose that I do serve on the board of the Boys and Girls Club. I've talked to Mr. Kirkland about that since I don't receive anything financially. He says that that is not a conflict that I need to stick by, but if the council would like for me to leave, I'll be glad to do that. Okay, and that would be on both six A and six B. I think the only requirement is that you've got to give them money. You don't get any money from them. Betty knows.
Mayor and Council Brian Bray, you're Community Services Director. The presentation you're going to hear shortly from Mr. Davidson, who is the president and CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of Deep East Texas, is a requirement in the next item that you have, and that is the annual agreement between the Boys and Girls Club of Nacogdoches and the City of Nacogdoches. So Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Davidson.
Great.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Mize, members of the council. So appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you tonight, give you an update on what's going on at the club. I know we saw some of you just the other night, so it may be a little repetitious of what you heard at our event. But I know all of you are returning council members, so I won't go into really the history of how the club was established. Just go right into our presentation regarding the Aquatic Center and the club. Aquatic Center serves a number of roles here in our community. It's used by the members of our club, used by Nacogdoches Independent School District Swim Team, and now Water Polo Team, both at the high school and the middle school. We've adjusted some of our hours, but we still are open the same amount of hours. In the morning, we used to be open from 5:00 to 6:30 in the morning, which we didn't see a lot of people, but we did see those people that had to be at work early. We've adjusted that to 7:30 to 9:00 in the morning, seem to be at more attendance that way. We're 12:00 to 2:00 in the afternoon, and then in the evenings from 6:30 to 8:30. We do availability for any family or individual that wants to rent a pool for any function or party. We have lifeguard training. We do general CPR classes. We have swim lessons, both for adults and youth. We do a collaboration with the local Boy Scouts to help them get their merit badges, and then we do water aerobics also in the afternoon. Some statistical numbers of the pool, we are open over 1,500 hours during the school year in the summer. This past year, we saw 4,481 patrons, of which 3,198 were adults and 1,283 were youth. Of those, our swim team, we had 259 participants. That's both the ambush team that swims all year round, as well as we do a summer swim team. We have swim lessons, saw 305 different participants this year. In birthday parties, we had a total of 18, serving 455 guests. Regards to the club, in the fall of 2021, received the 21st Century Grant. We're serving six additional sites, which are basically helping underperforming students and underperforming schools. Three of those locations are here in Nacogdoches, Fredonia, which is now the Mike Moses Elementary, Brooks Quinn Jones, and Carpenter Elementary Schools. The grant runs for a period of five school years and is renewable annually. We just got a renewal for the second year, so that'll go through the school year of '26, '27. We serve an additional 400 children in those locations, and the program's off after school and during the summer months. Okay, in regards to our total membership this year, we've seen 1,611 members during the school year. Our average daily attendance is 225 at our club site, an additional 200 children at our school site that was at Brooks Quinn Jones this summer. Our summer members, excuse me, those three schools, and then during the summer, it was at Brooks Quinn Jones. Again, we see about 250 kids during the club numbers, and additional 200 kids at the school sites. Our sports program, football, is just kicking off. We have 410 registered kids playing football this year, and those are representatives from the communities of Nacogdoches, Lufkin, Dyball, and Corrigan. And then we have our gymnastics program at the NiPco Center. This past summer was our busiest summer since I've been here. We had 835 unduplicated youth registered for this summer, with an average daily attendance of over 700 kids a day. Our club hours, we're open Monday through Friday during the school year from 3:00 to 7:00, and during the summer months from 8:00 to 5:00. We keep our fees affordable for all during the school year. You can attend the club from August through May. It's $75 for the year, and you get dinner each night at the club. During the summer months, June through August, it's $75 for the summer for the first child. If you have multiple children, it's $50 for every additional child, and we provide both breakfast and lunch during the summer months. And then we partner with Superior and AmeriGroup for families on Medicaid, and they will pay either the membership for the school year or for the summer for each of those children that are covered during the program. Demographics, this was the first for me. We have more girls than boys. We have 51% girls, 49% boys, 80% of our membership is under the age of 13. We're very diverse, Caucasian 35%, African American 36%, Hispanic 21%, and multirace 8%. And then family breakdown, 57%. Both parents, and 43% either single parent or guardian. This year, since the start of 2022, we served 22,000 school meals the first five months of the year, and 12,300 during the summer, for a total of 34,300 total meals in the first seven months of this year. Our market penetration, again, 1,611 members. Our school district is 5,940 members, so about 28% of our membership, 28% of the kids who come to the club, so 28% of the kids who come to the club. So basically, little over, one out of every four children in our school district are involved in the Boys and Girls Club in some manner. And I'd always like to provide you a little bit of a breakdown in regards to our revenue streams. 2021 is kind of skewed. You can see our fundraising efforts there were 1%. That's because of the COVID year. But you can see what was in donations, an annual campaign, has now been kind of spread out over the fundraising and some of the fees and dues. So it's changed a little bit, but stays pretty consistent, and we try to keep our revenue streams diverse, so that way, like when we suffered in fundraising two years ago, that it doesn't affect the programs and services that we offer because we're able to pick up the revenue in another area. So, okay, we'll leave it open for questions.
Sure. Yeah, any questions from the public? Okay, any council, any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
No, we appreciate the support from the city, the community. For those that were there the other night, we had a great event, over 300 people attended, and very supportive.
I have just a couple of questions, but I look forward to your presentation every year, and it's really nice to hear about this, so thank you. I just had a question about the registration fees.
Yes.
Are there any other scholarships available besides the, well, the Medicaid thing isn't a scholarship, but it's, you know, a deal?
So we don't ever turn away anybody. What we may do is, but we also don't like to give away memberships. So if there's a family, and it's usually a family that has multiple children, the ones that struggle, is we'll work out something where maybe that child earns that membership. So maybe they help cleaning up after the meals, or maybe they're distributing something or helping out in another way, and that way they can feel like they earn the membership as opposed to just be given to them. But we never turn away somebody because they can't afford the fees.
And then my last question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the registration payment due all at once when they register? Are there payment plans?
There are payment plans. So if somebody says, I can't pay that all upfront, and that's for all of our programs, whether it be gymnastics, swimming, and things like that, we can work it out over a period of either paycheck periods, like every two weeks, or if it works out better than on a monthly basis, but the same thing. If our membership's $75, and they could pay us $25 now, and $25 next month, and $25 the month after. The last thing we do is we don't want the children to be home by themselves.
Right.
We'd rather have them at the club, and we can figure something out, so. And sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, but it's just money.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Baldwin, you good?
Yeah, I just want, only rental.
Yes.
Do you have to be a member to be able to do a rental? You have to have a membership?
To rent the facility?
Yes.
No, it's open to anybody in the community.
And does that just?
But our membership, again, is only six to 18, so the majority of our rentals are either a family renting it for a child party or things like that.
And is that just during the week, or is that weekend included?
It depends. It depends on the availability of the club. Obviously, between the hours of 3:00 and 7:00 are restricted because of the club's open, or 8:00 to 5:00 during the summer. But we've had sports teams come in and rent the gymnasium in the evenings for both volleyball. We've partnered with the city and allowed some of their teams to come in and practice volleyball in the evenings or basketball. If there's somebody that wants to use the facility, we, our club in Lufkin, for example, rents out to Piney Woods Academy, Community Academy during the school day when our clubs are closed. So if there's opportunities for us to be a good partner and open our facilities, we will.
Thank you.
Okay, great. With that, we'll move on to six B.
Okay, thank you.
Your bet, thank you. Consider approval of an agreement between the City of Nacogdoches and the Boys and Girls Club of Deep East Texas for essential services in the amount of $70,000.
Yes, Mayor, once again, Brian Bray, you're Community Services Director, and what Mr. Davidson was saying there at the end, that he's partnered with the city for basketball and volleyball, we probably would not have been able to operate those programs in the previous years without their assistance, so it is definitely greatly appreciated from the recreation side. So the agreement you have before you this evening between the City of Nacogdoches and the Boys and Girls Club of Deep East Texas includes, but is not limited to, necessary facilities, supplies, qualified staff, and volunteers to support a year-round indoor swimming facility for Nacogdoche citizens. So this agreement started in 2005, when the city closed Maroni Pool, and the city council and staff at the time felt that it was necessary to provide that opportunity to citizens. And so for a reduced rate, the Boys and Girls Club does provide approximately 1,500 hours a year on an annual basis, rather, for citizen use. So obviously, they have, as Mr. Davidson just said, they have more hours than that for swim team and for other functions. In 2019, that amount went from 35,000 to 70,000. The only change that we've had in the contract since that time was to include but not limited to. And that way, the club is able to provide swim services and additional services for citizens of Nacogdoches in exchange for that $70,000. So the agreement you have this evening is the exact same one that you, or previous council approved last year, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you or council may have after public comment.
Right? Is there any public comment? Okay, council, any questions?
Just a little one. This has sample agreement, this is the agreement, though, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just wanted to be sure.
I've just had experience with the school swim program and know what exists in some of the communities that are around us, and they don't have swim program in their high school because they don't have a Boys and Girls Club that offers a facility of this type. And we've got a program at our high school that has sent kids to state 20 years in a row, or maybe, it may be even longer than that. So very competitive, have a wonderful coach, Kerry Scroggins, but I'm just, I'm a huge fan. I think it's a great thing, and we really appreciate what the Boys and Girls Club has done for Nacogdoches. Anybody?
Make a motion, we approve item six B.
All right.
I'll second.
Do you have a second? Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right. Thank you again, Mr. Davidson, for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
And you too, Ms. Shin.
[laughter]
Okay, so we'll move to six C. Consider approval of a resolution of support of the Better Together's Common Agenda to improve the mental health, wellness, and well-being of the residents in the County of Nacogdoches. City Manager and Chair of Better Together, Ms. Wyndham.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, before Ms. Wyndham walks up to the podium, I actually gave her an elevated title. I've known Ms. Wyndham now a couple of years, and every time I see all kinds of community activity, she's very involved. So she's not actually the Chair of Better Together, she's the Chair of the Broadband Committee, but she's very involved with Better Together. And so I just, it's an honest mistake to give her that title because she is everywhere. She is almost, she's very ubiquitous in all the things that she does here in Nacogdoches. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Wyndham, let you, let her explain what's been going on with Better Together.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here representing Better Together, asking community partners to sign a resolution that you agree with what we're working on. So I want you to know what it is that we're working on, so you know what I'm asking you to sign. Is this a clicker for me?
No, click your own. It's the one that you can't see what it's supposed to do, click that one.
Thank you very much.
Click too many times, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So in July of 2018, we started an appreciative inquiry through the School of Social Work and SFA. Dr. Steve Cooper applied for a grant from the HOG Foundation for mental wellness, mental health, and there was a certain way we were supposed to go about doing this, and this is when I got involved. It went around asking residents all over town, business owners and elected officials, asking everyone what they thought our strengths and weaknesses were here in Nacogdoches, and documented all of the answers. And we looked at the data, and we learned how to analyze qualitative and quantitative data as members of this appreciative inquiry. So based on all of that feedback from the community, we built a common agenda. What I want to share with you are the anchor goals that were based on that feedback. So the first anchor goal is to build a 21st century identity that balances the old town in Texas with the need to move forward and what's in the best interest of all the residents. Under this, those goals that support that 21st century identity is to ensure affordable behavioral healthcare services and make sure that that's available to all, provide Nacogdoches youth with needed support to develop and maintain social and emotional health, create community partnerships to divert individuals with mental illness from the criminal justice system to the appropriate services, ensure affordable, comprehensive healthcare services to all, create a healthy economic environment where residents can thrive. Engage in activities to raise awareness on issues that impact the community, improve overall community health by transforming it into a blue zone community, create an environment for the community to meet their basic needs, encourage people to reduce stress, find their purpose, and give back to the community. Ensure that affordable broadband services is available to all residents. And based on all of that and much, much more, our next steps are to continue to present these materials and let all of our partners in this know what our goals are, and to gain support from all the interested entities. Begin implementation of a technology action plan, which we are having our first stakeholder meeting September 12th, and Larissa Philpott from NEDCO has assisted me, as I chair this broadband committee, to make sure that not only, you know, we took a survey to see where our deficits were in terms of affordable and accessible broadband, even in the rural areas, and then say, okay, well, what are we going to do about this? And so Connected Nations helped us to formulate a technology action plan. We want to share that with stakeholders, and then we want to hold accountable the parties that can help us provide that, or see if we need, what else we need to do to make that happen. One thing we discovered, especially through COVID, because we began this, obviously, 2018 prior to the pandemic, and then through COVID, learned just how important broadband is in providing healthcare and mental wellness to those who don't have easy access with transportation, and also it's financially more feasible when you can get your services delivered through broadband. So that crosses a whole lot of lines in improving wellness and health in the community. So I have a list of partners, and I won't bore you by reading them all, unless you would like to know them all. Actually, I'll read them all. I lied. In the very beginning, when the School of Social Work at SFA put this together, something they did was, they had to do for the HOG Foundation, was say, who else is going to do this with you? Who are you linking arms with? And these are the entities that signed on the dotted line that they would help with this appreciative inquiry. And HOG Foundation actually awarded a grant of $400,000 to carry out the appreciative inquiry, and then they have lived up to their promise to help us continue to find ways to make these initiatives sustainable and have added millions to that $400,000. And we are moving forward with a group that is going to really make a difference, but it will take all these entities working together. So the organizational partners are Burke Center, Rural East Texas Health Network, Greater East Texas Community Action Program, Concerned Black Men of Nacogdoches, NISD, Interdominational Ministers Alliance, Nacogdoches Ministerial Alliance, Brown Family Health Center, Resilient Nacogdoches, Community Arts Center of East Texas, Nacogdoches Progressive Leadership Group, Nacogdoches Area United Way, East Texas Community Health Services, Reverend Kyle Childress, Jim Lemon, James Montoya, and Jane Childress. And you can, I mean, I can provide this to you, but there was an appreciative inquiry team that included a lot of stakeholders and concerned citizens. I know some of you have been at some of those meetings to hear some of that feedback and to give your input as well. So we are asking the city to sign a resolution maintaining that you still support the work of Better Together.
All right.
Any questions?
Great, let's start with, any questions from the public? Okay, any questions from council? Mr. Baldwin?
Let me just say, on referrals, it's, I mean, you're just right now a referral organization, right? You don't have your organization in place with the expertise. You don't have your organization in place with expertise to help, like, when you said referral from the criminal justice system?
That's one of our goals, to help find solutions to those issues. So, right, we do not provide services. We are a network of providers and stakeholders and business and community groups to say, how can we work together to improve the situation? Maybe write grants and find solutions for those issues.
And the criminal justice system, is there an age bracket for youth? Like ones that's in juvenile detention? Or we have a lot of young youth that, they've been traumatized, and they are mental health eligible for any type of services that need to be provided. But we are finding, you know, like through CPS, CASA, and et cetera, Concerned Black Men, that they are coming in at an earlier age now. So we can't wait until, you know, they get into the criminal justice system before we start to try and help them.
Yes, sir, one of the line items in the committee that the mayor was in, that I chaired, a term was brought up, cradle to career and beyond. And so part of the concern that we have in this area is for our youth and how to solve some of those problems as preemptive strikes and some social-emotional learning, providing them with resources and coping skills so that we don't get to that point of criminal justice being the only answer. But then it's going to require some upstream and downstream solutions because the problem has already happened. And so, you know, hopefully, as we get these resolutions signed, that we'll be able to work together as agencies, the school district and all the ones listed here, and hopefully even more, to not work in silos, but work together to provide services for those children.
I think it's a very good system, thank you.
I'm really excited about this. Could you tell us anything more about the staff person that you guys are looking to hire? And what you're hoping that that person does?
Well, you're asking me one person, and there's a group of people. I can tell you that, you know, the job description hasn't been written, honestly. And so that is a big question mark in that space. But we do know we need someone that would be able to write grants. I know if we could wave our magic wand, it would be someone who has the same passion for mental wellness and for Nacogdoches community. On top of that, can also write grants. On top of that, works, you know, 80 hours a week for 20 hours of pay. So if you know someone, let me know.
Thank you.
I guess really the only thing that I have is comments on particularly the broadband issue. That's not just an issue for mental health, it's an issue for the community at large, for education. And as someone who is in education and as a child of someone who spent his entire career at Burke, I think that that's a necessity. We have to figure out a way to provide better broadband, particularly outside the city where it's so sparse.
I agree, it's an economic development issue and, you know, enticing businesses and families to come here.
Right, thank you. Do I have a motion for the resolution?
So move?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ms. Wyndham, thank you for your time, thanks for being with us tonight.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
We'll move to 6E. Receive a presentation of the 2023 Annual Budget and Marketing Plan for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Sherry, how are you tonight?
I am well, thank you.
Good, thanks for being with us.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just to refresh everybody, there is a 13% hotel occupancy tax on hotel properties or beds lodging partners that operate within the city limits. Seven of that goes on to the state, six of that remains here in Nacogdoches to be reinvested in historic preservation and marketing. These are restricted funds. They're overseen by the Attorney General's Office for the State of Texas. And there's nine steps that you have to, you can run through to make sure that you are utilizing hotel taxes in an appropriate manner. Of the hotel occupancy tax that's collected here in Nacogdoches, we receive 72.5% of that as our, as the money that we can use for our marketing buys, for our staff salaries, utilities, anything that we have outlined to do. But our two biggest expenditures are our marketing budget and salaries. We have two agreements with the city. One is so that our employees at the Convention and Visitors Bureau can be regarded as contracted employees of the city. And then the second contract is a contract of services that outlines that 72.5% that we have to operate with. And also, it says that after the Board of Directors of the Convention and Visitor Bureau annually approves the budget, city council has a final say. So that's what brings me in front of you today. Our board approved this budget on Friday, the 26th of August. Every year, Pam Kerbo and I have an exchange of, do you see anything on the horizon that you feel is going to affect the remittance of tax positively or negatively? And when taxes are remitted, they come through the finance office. So Pam has great institutional knowledge on hotels that are paying in a timely fashion, who are paying completely what, you know, if they're spending partial payments. Some don't pay us, and then we have to ask more firmly, and they still don't pay us. So in your packet, you received our most recent financial statement along with the proposed budget, and it's a great example of our actual column. We are currently in a deficit of $28,000, but that's for both income and expenses. This is only up until July, so this is basically June and July. Since this report was tabulated, we've received hot taxes in the amount of $118,000. We've received payment that was due from Stephen F. Austin for $7,000. So we spend money pretty regularly, but getting the money in with which to pay that, it doesn't always match up. So this is a great example of how you just have to have a little faith. And hopefully, by October or September 30th, really, there are no more negatives and everything is bright and shiny. But you'll see that for this year, our proposed budget number that we're working with is $615,000. Thank you, Jan. And as you can see through the line items, as I stated earlier, the biggest expenditures are in our marketing costs, and that includes promotional brochures, maps, things like that. Our website, we did switch website providers for a more financially sustainable website provider. And our app provider is on there. And then our salaries as well. And I'm happy to answer any specific questions you might have of a particular line item, but we do present this proposed balanced budget for $615,000 for 2023. The other thing that calls for your approval is our marketing plan for the upcoming year. We did just recently, in June, switch over to a new website provider. There are things in this year's budget that we have, that are unknown. We know that they're going to go up, such as utilities. And with a building of our age, if we have any repairs that come up, just last year, we had $6,700 to fix an air conditioner, which that's not a, if you're going to fix it, that's when you're going to get it fixed because that's not very hospitable, that kind of heat. So we really are going to turn an inward eye. We've got some, a $14,000 contract with an outside vendor that comes up at the end of February. We will not be renewing that. We really are going to shore down our expenditures and make sure that there is a sound return on investment for every penny that goes out and that it is current and useful and specific to what the needs of Nacogdoches are. Current industry indicators show that traditional business travel has not recovered from the pandemic, nor is it set to, because people found out a cheaper way to take care of business. So we're having to rethink that because that's something new and different. Nacogdoches is lucky because our niche of tourism is heritage tourism. So for every dollar that we spend in marketing to heritage tourists, it comes back to us sevenfold. Heritage tourists are typically in their early retirement years. They're interested in our history, they still, they have disposable income, and they have time to stay, and they have flexibility of schedule that allows them to prolong their visit if they like what they see. But in general, our marketing plan, we're going to continue to engage with our drive markets, which are Houston, Dallas, Austin, San Antonio. In my time here, which is going into its fifth year, we've added Shreveport and some Louisiana destinations as well because we see them come through our door. We're going to continue engaging internationally with the Canadian market. We've got a great deal with dual-income, no-children couples right over the border, and they are responding robustly to our marketing efforts. We'll highlight heritage tourism, and we're also going to explore ecotourism, which would include birding, which is very popular, wellness tourism to take advantage of some of our natural assets, such as morning glory yoga, stretch ER, Well Again Counseling Center, and our outdoors as well. And as always, multi-generational tourism. So if we can capture a family of three or two generations, we would love to do that because that helps us as storykeepers to pass along the stories to more varied generations. We're going to update and digitize our services for groups and gatherings on our new webpage and make a home for them there. And consolidate the multitude of individual brochures that we have into one magazine-sized Nacogdoches Experience Guide so that when somebody calls or emails or requests information from us, we will have one guide that not only has what they're looking for, but what they don't know that they want. So that's what we look forward to doing in the fiscal year ending 2023.
Sherry, my question is on your room tax, public funds. Looks like that's increasing a pretty good bit. Is there a rationale, or Pam, is there a, can you help us with that?
Sure. We actually are looking at, I think this year, we're going to be even higher than what we are planning for next year because, you know, we, I'm a very conservative budgeter on revenues. And so what we're budgeting, I believe, is $800,000 in total revenue for the city. Their 72.5% of that is the $615,000. But I think we're going to end this year at, if everybody paid on time, we would end this year probably around 820, 830, maybe even 840. And so it is a little bit, the budget is a little bit less than what we have collected this year. But that's kind of what we do, is go back and look and see prior to the pandemic what was going on and what our annual increase was. And then we kind of take the pandemic out of it and then look at what we've done this year and then try to forecast forward. And so still being pretty conservative with that, but yes, we have seen an increase in the hotel tax. It's back to the pre-COVID revenue era.
Thank you.
And we've also invested with a third-party vendor that allows us to capture the owner-manager address and listings of short-term rentals so we can now communicate with them their need to sign up with finance to remit what they owe.
Got you. Okay, any, yes, ma'am?
Yeah, along the same lines, kind of. You mentioned earlier too in your presentation about reminding people, reminding hotels that they need to pay us, and then reminding them again, and then sometimes they still don't. What happens when they just don't? I mean, what recourse do you guys, or does the city take them to court? You don't know? Nothing?
I can tell you before he jumps in and tells you too. We don't have anybody that has not paid. They're just very, very slow payers. And so this year, we've got a couple of hotels with the one owner that is behind quite a few months. And so Mr. Kirkland gets kind of brought into it when they get significantly far behind and gets to kind of, you know, bring them back to the table. And we'll get, you know, the six or seven month past due amount, and then we'll try again the next month. They eventually get caught up. We don't have anybody that owes us for time that, you know, they've never paid. It's just they're, we have a couple of very, very slow payers. But we do eventually get it.
Okay, thank you.
We can sue them.
Okay.
Anything?
Not specifically about your marketing plan or the budget. Just to say that I did participate in a meeting a couple of months ago and was delighted with how that board works together and the visioning that they have. And I'm glad that we appointed your chair back to that committee and...
I am glad as well, and I am very blessed with the board that I have there. They are very active and engaged. And I was woefully wrong. I did not mention that Mike Bay is in the audience, and he is our visitor service coordinator. And as lovely as you think it is to work with him, you're not even scratching the surface. You're nowhere near. He is the biggest asset in Nacogdoches, and we're lucky to have him.
We saw him.
Oh, did he?
No, he's there.
He might be, he might be, but he deserves it.
I was impressed last year with your emphasis on stories. I thought that was really interesting. How has that played out this year?
It's really helped us, and I think specifically it's helped make the task of volunteering with us a little more easy to consume as a volunteer because really, if you just learn three stories, the people change. You just, you know, you can start telling your story. And I, you know, it's the truth about Nacogdoches. We are rich with history and stories, and we have to find a way to keep those stories alive if we want to keep our specific history. So it's going to become important when we have generations of kids who don't really know who Charles Bright was. And so we need to work really hard to honor his legacy and his memory by reminding people of not just what he did for downtown, but, you know, how he started making chairs and then, you know, he revolutionized loading, humanely loading poultry. And he just was a man of tremendous vision, and I never met him. But it's so important to me and staff that we feel like that's our responsibility to keep those stories alive. And I just presented to a resident's life training, and even though only two people in that room could tell me who the Marx Brothers were, I said, well, guess what? I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you exactly who they are and why it's important in Nacogdoches. But yeah, and we have, we're not at a loss. You know, we've got a great bronze statue called the Storytellers over by the Fredonia. We could easily have a female companion to that piece with a Diana Walker. with a Diana Walker and a Betty Shin and these women of legacy in this town that.
You woke Betty up.
What? But it, it is to answer your question, it's, it's worked and we're going to continue to do that.
I just wanted to say, I think that, that has been a good theme. I mean, it draws together a lot, so. And I also wanted to thank you and Mike and all the people just personally because we had an out of, an event that brought a lot of out-of-town people. We had a wedding, it was very nice. And you all were so helpful in, with our out-of-town guests, showing them things that they could do in Nacogdoches. And, and I know they spent more money because of your help and your work. And so I really wanted to thank you.
I'll pass that along to staff, that means a lot to them.
Please do.
You know, during the monthly meeting, speak highly of how well the website is doing? And the amount of hits you get on it?
Yes, sir.
But on your budget proposal, you are spending more on advertisement and less on website.
That's, we had before, I think when Carl was the CDB director, he entered into an agreement with the city to go in together to pay for the website through a company called Simple View. And at that moment, it was never going to be sustainable for the CDB to do that on their own. And so what we have done is gone with a company called Sapphire that still produces a great product. But with that original Simple View, I always equated it with giving a sixteen-year-old boy a Ferrari. It was a great website, I wish we could afford it. It gave us a lot of bells and whistles. But, and it gave us access to a lot of data. But unless you have the staff and the money to do something with that data, you're just spending money to pad your G-Wiz back. Like, it's just fun, fun facts, but you can't really do it. So what we did in going with Sapphire, we still get all the information that we need for Nacogdoches to be simple. So that return on that investment is less, very much less, than what we were paying to stay with Simple View. But it's a better fit, just so happens.
Thank you for, I mean, during the meetings, the staff seemed so excited. I mean.
We are excitable.
And they promote Nacogdoches. I tell you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. And on the chambers stakeholder calls, I, in my report every other week with, I thank everybody on the call for everything that they do every day in ways big and small for making Nacogdoches a great place to visit because it really is, at the end of the day, it's the people of Nacogdoches that make it a place that people want to visit and come back to.
Thank you. Were there any questions or comments from the public? Okay. And I would ask council, do I have a motion to approve the budget and the marketing plan for the Convention and Visitors Bureau?
Make a motion, we approve item six E as presented.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Second.
Have a second, thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, we will move to six F, a public hearing. Hold a public hearing and receive citizen input on the fiscal year 2022, 2023 proposed budget. Finance Director.
Mayor, Council, Pam Carbo, Director of Finance. Tonight, the budget before you has not had any changes since the last time we have discussed the budget. So I'm going to kind of go through this hurriedly and then the, then you can open it up for the public hearing. As a reminder, the proposed tax rate is fifty-eight point four eight cents per one hundred dollar valuation of that. Operations and maintenance is fifty point seven seven two cents and the debt rate is seven point seven oh eight cents per hundred dollars. This generates additional revenue this year of eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Of that, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars is from new value added this year. There are no proposed fee schedule changes for water, sewer sanitation, or street maintenance for this fiscal year. As a reminder, we will be looking at a utility rate study during this fiscal year. So those would be in a future fiscal year if there are any needed schedule changes. General fund budget, again, no changes since the, the last time we spoke. Operating revenues of twenty-eight point seven million, operating expenditures of twenty-eight point seven million, a use of reserves of three point two million, and then the proposed CO issuance of twenty million. Before we jump to the utility fund, I would like to, to discuss with you a little bit about that proposed CO issuance. We have been going forward through this budget process with those nineteen point eight, eight million dollars worth of projects. The COs themselves have been, the terminology has been not to exceed the twenty-one-one and that's what our financial advisors used to, to calculate all of the amortization schedules. We have, Mario and I today spent a lot of time on the phone with the bond rating agencies, with the underwriters, going through our financials and, and doing that entire process. But before we get to the final stage and they actually issue the final official statement, we have to advise them what the exact amount of these COs are going to be. And so everything up until this point has been not to exceed twenty-one point one. So tonight, I need some guidance on, do we want to do twenty? Do we want to do twenty-five? Do we want to do twenty-one? Do we want to do twenty-one-one? Because we have the ability within the, the tax rate and with the interest rates that, that were estimated on the, the issuance of the certificates, we can do up to the twenty-one-one. So we know that we have the nineteen eight in those particular projects, which gives you about another million dollars to move within those four projects. Now, we can't add another project. It has to be within those four projects, streets, drainage, parks, or the fire station. But if you wanted to add an additional half a million dollars to streets and a half a million dollars to drainage, you could do that. Do not have to make that determination on where you want that money spent tonight. We have plenty of time for that. It just has to be done before we end up spending all of the money. It's just, I need to know whether we're going to issue twenty million dollars' worth of bonds or certificates or twenty-one million dollars' worth of certificates. And so I'm, I'm going to leave that with you for a few minutes and we'll come back to it after the, the public hearing. And then we'll go ahead and jump on over to the utility fund. But that is something that I'm, I'm going to need for us to discuss in a little more detail tonight. On the utility fund here, like I said, no changes here. This is twenty million dollars in proposed revenues, operating expenditures of twelve million, debt service expenditures of three point seven, capital expenditures of seventeen point oh five. Now, keep in mind that eight of that is ARPA funds and so that's not all, that's not all cash reserves. That is, about half of it is, is ARPA monies. And then for a total of, of allocated funds of fifty-four million dollars. In sanitation fund, same thing, revenues of seven point two, operating expenditures five point five, capital expenditures of four point nine. And those other financing uses are our monies that we set aside annually for new cell construction and closure of, of the existing cells. So with that, I can either, we can talk about the COs now before we do the public hearing if, if you want to or.
I would be wanting to hear from the public, I think. Anybody want to speak to the budget? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Brandi Cartwright and I think that the budget looks pretty good this year. And I think that we need more money for our streets and sewers. I was driving over here during the downpour and there was just lots and lots of water, guys, so much water. So I think that if it's within the CO to do additional things for our streets and sewers, that's probably a good idea. But I also think that the rest of the budget looks pretty good. It's a great job, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? I might indulge myself. Mr. Bartlet, could, can you speak to that? If, if, if we were to take extra for, I mean, it was my understanding, I think at one time that this is probably fills our plate with what we've got proposed to do. Are there, are there other things that we could, we could do during the next couple of years? Or with this money?
Steve Bartlett, Director of Public Works. And so certainly, as you've heard me pitch many times, I can spend as much on infrastructure projects as you can come up with funds. So we do have a list that's much longer than this. What we presented you were kind of a back-end list, knowing what funding was going to be available. So certainly, we could utilize more funds and do more projects. And there is a concern that if we drop too much on the market at one time, we're going to struggle with some materials and contractors. And the intention is probably to do as much of this locally or locally in our area with contractors as possible. So we could saturate that. What is that amount? What's that value? It's kind of difficult to pinpoint it. Another million or two mixed between streets and drainage, I think, is something that we could certainly kind of digest between at least those two areas and do a little more. If that kind of answers your question, Mayor.
Council, any other?
But, but as it stands right now, you, you don't have another project in mind?
I, I have more projects on the list than, than we currently have addressed at the funding. And I'll tell you, as time goes on, depending on the schedule of all this, those costs are, are increasing as you'll even see tonight, just our annual cost for asphalt and things are up twenty percent. And that's just going to be mirrored in bids that tend to surprise us every day now. So I think the money may not go even quite as far as we'd hoped by the time we hit the ground.
But the payback and there's no extension of years out on the loan, right? I mean, the bond?
Okay. All, all of the, the financial information, everything that was used to calculate the new debt rate includes up to the twenty-one-one.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bellinger, do you have a question for?
Not, not for Mr. Bartlett, I have some thoughts, but.
Okay. Any, any other questions for him? Okay, thank you, sir. Your, your thoughts?
I had one major concern as I was reviewing the entire budget. And first of all, I think we ought to just keep things the same. We already have them published exactly what is being proposed. I would rather keep it the same. But I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Lately, it's been said or implied that in meetings and online that the state of our fire facilities is because of inaction by the city council. And I can't speak to prior councils, but I can speak to this council and the last year's and last year's budget. And I just wanted to make it very, very clear that the council has funded every single request made to us for firefighters, fire equipment, firefighter salaries, building maintenance. And we've actually funded more than what was requested. Last year, we put a million dollars into a new fire truck. And this year, just a few weeks ago, we added step raises for both the fire firefighters and police, even though it wasn't even in the proposed budget. So I know we have real, real urgent, immediate needs for the fire stations two and five, and that's the downtown fire station and the East Main Station. And I'm concerned that they haven't, they weren't brought to our attention as immediate needs and they're not included specifically in this budget. And we actually have six hundred thousand dollars allocated in this very budget for repair and maintenance for fire stations, but they are not for those two fire stations. They specifically exclude those two stations. And those are the ones that need urgent repairs. So I'm asking, I don't know if we need to have a motion on this, but I would like that particular item to be open for all fire station repairs. And I'd like to ask our city manager to make sure that the firefighters are no longer in any immediate danger. And that needs to be taken care of within the budget with those, those repair and maintenance. And if, and if it's not, if we can't take care of it, I mean, we need to look at other items that aren't as urgent. But that, it isn't, anyway, I pretty much said we need to take care of their needs right now.
Could we hear from maybe Chief Kiplinger on, on that item?
Well, I don't think, I mean, we could.
I'd like, I'd like to hear from him.
But we need.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Keith Kiplinger, your Fire Chief. The reason those two stations were excluded from this budget is because we were moving forward with the bond projects and we didn't want to be left with stranded costs. If we were going to have fire station on the ground in eighteen months, there would have been a significant amount of those, again, stranded costs that, that were tied to those facility upgrades. And so the other stations, we realized that that's not going to be an immediate fix or an immediate replacement and that's why they were included in the budget.
So my request still stands because we have immediate needs that I, I don't care how fast we build a building or what happens. Those firefighters don't need to be in terrible living conditions right now. So I think we need to open that particular line item budget to all of our fire stations and I think we need to address it immediately.
I, I have a question, a follow-up question. And I don't know if it's for you, Chief, or for you, Ms. Carbo. But if, if it turns out that we don't move forward with the COs because the petition gets the signature, the required signatures, would, at that point, would there be an, a chance to, to make that change that Councilmember Bellinger is requesting?
Sure, at any point that the council so chooses, we can amend the budget. And so I believe, if you will help me out, the original amount of the repairs, if we had not replaced Station Two and Five, added another four or five hundred thousand dollars? So yeah, I mean, we, we definitely can, can amend the budget and add another four to five hundred thousand dollar worth of, of maintenance items to address the issues in Station Two and Five if we do not proceed with the COs.
But it can't be paid out of the debt component, is that right?
Well, I'm saying if, if the COs do not proceed. So if we, if, if we, if the petition comes forward and, and the CO process stops, then for us, in order for us to do anything with the fire stations, maintenance-wise, would be out of general fund reserves and would require budget amendment at that point. Because there, there would be no debt at that point.
But there's still, if we approve a tax rate, there is a debt component in the tax rate.
It has to pay existing debt. So we could use that to pay the fire truck, the two thousand and one tax notes. We can use that to pay that off, but we cannot use it for something that's non-debt related.
Got you, okay.
Well, let me reiterate this. I mean, we actually have an item in the budget. And if there are other items in the budget, I, I can't imagine that any of the items in the budget are, are as important as keeping our firefighters safe right now. And so I would respectfully like to make sure that that one item is for all fire stations as we need and that you all make your choices and take care of the immediate needs right now.
So that, that one item, the five hundred and ninety-four thousand, is specific to certain items needed at those three stations. And so if you're, what you're saying is you want to take that five ninety-four and spread it over all of those stations?
I'm saying I'd like to give you all discretion so that you can take care of our firefighters right now.
So, so yeah, then that would mean that we would have to look at the items that we had presented and not maintain one of those other three stations in order to, to move it.
Whatever, and there are other items in the budget? And, and there's flexibility in several items, including, I think, I don't have it in front of me. You have mid-year allocations and some other things and possibly your, the sales revenue. But we need to spend what it takes right now.
Right, and, and all of that would be done with a budget amendment. It's, it's very, very easy to do.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question, just probably for the chief, but I'm not sure? I was under the impression that each ones, each one of the stations had issues that needed to be addressed immediately, not just two and five.
Absolutely. So we went through and did an assessment and did immediate needs, kind of some mid-range needs, one to three-year needs if we're going to stay in those facilities, and then sort of some longer-term needs if we're going to stay them, in them beyond about five years. And so we're trying to be as fiscally responsible as we could. We took those, those first-year needs, identified them and put them in this first tranche. Because we were moving forward with the CO, we did back out Station Five and Station Two, again, trying to be fiscally responsible. And so we will be back in next year's budget, the subsequent years, with those deferred maintenance requests just to keep those facilities online and operating. This first year, again, it's those immediate needs. We'll parse that, that, the, the next year's needs and we'll try to, try to, over the next five years, try to. try to keep those facilities where they're operational. But.
And if the COs do move forward, then that would include things on Stations Two and Five that would have otherwise been included in the budget.
Yes.
Without the COs.
So, so actually, if the COs go forward and y'all choose to do the full twenty-one point one, y'all can allocate some of that money to maintain the other three stations. That is within the, the confines of the resolution is to maintain or construct fire facilities. And so, if y'all choose to, to do the year twos and three, the, the whole bit of, of maintenance on those other three stations, you could utilize those funds for that as well.
But could you utilize it for the other two stations?
Yes, yes. As long as it's a firefighting facility.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes.
Any, anyone else? Ms. Huckbee, any comments? So, do we go from here?
So, now I need to know what exact amount we want to issue COs for.
Just so that I'm clear, adding, taking it from nineteen point eight to twenty-one point one or to twenty or whatever we decide isn't just for the purpose of funding additional proj- projects, but also to give some padding in case the cost estimates that we put together.
Right. Uh, last year.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, yeah. And then costs and materials and labor has gone up.
Exactly. And, and just as, as, as Mr. Bartlett said, everything, we've come to y'all with lots of budget amendments this year because our, our budget estimates were nowhere close because of, of supply chain issues. And so, five million dollars' worth of streets last year and five million dollars' worth of streets next year are not going to buy the same amount of streets. And so, you know, with, with the addition of the, of the, the extra million dollars, yes, it can do more projects, but it also may just be literally just doing the projects that we wanted to do as we run into cost overruns.
Thank you.
I guess mine is more of a comment than, than anything. I really don't have an appetite for us going beyond what the projects were originally listed as. I just, I just can't see moving up. Steel costs are down, lumber costs are down. I just, if we're going to move forward, I don't think we need to increase that amount anymore.
Do we need a motion on, on this amount or just by concurrents or?
You can do consensus if you have one, or you can do an up or down vote on a number. It's, it's entirely up to you.
Okay. Does anybody else have a thought on an amount?
I only have, uh, in regards to one point three million to get it to twenty-one.
Yeah, it's at nineteen eight eighty, I think, or nineteen eight, yeah. And then twenty-one-one is, is the max.
It's hardly ever, when you do a annual budget, that you don't go in and amend it. So, I wouldn't have an issue with going to like twenty-one point one.
I agree with that.
I move that we stay with the nineteen eight eighty or whatever that final cost is.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Is that a motion? I'm, I'm assuming?
Yes.
And, and a second. Okay. Any discussion? All right. Those in favor signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Make a motion that we go with the twenty-one point one.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Those in favor signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, we will move on to consider ordinance of the City of Nacogdoches, Texas approving and adopting annual budget for fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-two and ending September thirty, twenty twenty-three, providing that said expenditures for said fiscal year shall be made in accordance with said budget, unless otherwise authorized by ordinance adopted by the city council, providing for repeal clause, providing acceptability clause, providing an effective date finance director.
So, tonight you have the option of, of voting on the adoption of the budget. A couple of years ago, the legislature changed the timing on budget and tax rate adoptions, and now we, we do those within seven days of each other. The last two years, we have tabled the adoption of the budget until the night that we adopted the tax rate. You can do either or, does not matter. Tonight, and I guess I would have to ask Mr. Kirkland this, since we are going to go forward with the full twenty-one-one CO issuance, that is not built into the current budget as presented, it's twenty million. And so, that change would have to be made. And so, I don't know if we can adopt with that caveat that that change is being made, or it would be just cleaner to, 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 to bring back a full document with the twenty-one-one next week when we do the, the tax rate. Sounds like we should do that.
Your budget has to have the tax rate.
It's got the tax rate, just not the full twenty, it's, it's only showing twenty million dollars' worth of projects, not the twenty-one-one. And the actual revenue and expenditures in the budget, not, the tax rate is the same.
Tax rate is set for the twenty-one-one, then you can do what you need to do.
Okay. So, either or. It probably would be cleaner. We've done that a couple of years. We've just adopted the tax rate in the budget on the same night, and that would be next Tuesday. But it's, it's completely at your, at your discretion whether you want to go ahead and, and go forward with the budget tonight or, or wait till next Tuesday. And regardless of when that happens, it has to be a record vote, FYI.
Good, next Tuesday? Is that good? Okay. I think so. Yeah, we'll just table to next Tuesday.
All righty.
Okay, we'll move to H. Consider approval of ordinance number nineteen twenty-seven dash oh nine dash twenty-two, amending Chapter Ten Aviation, Article Two, Administration, Division Two, Airport Advisory Board, Section Ten dash fifty-six, Composition, Appointment, Term of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Nacogdoches, Texas. Ms. Philpott.
Good afternoon. I'm here in place of Mr. Joe Seffalu. I'm Larissa Philpott, your Economic Development Director. Should be a very easy and simple request for you tonight. During your board interview process, the city council and both the Airport Advisory Board and the city council determined that they would function better with having all of their members as full regular members. Currently, that ordinance states that there are five regular members and two alternate members. That was designed many years ago to ensure that they have a quorum if anyone had to recuse themselves or was, was unable to attend. We've had excellent attendance of that board for quite some time, and they've, they've requested this change formally to you tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Any public comment? Okay. Council comment, questions? Think we've talked about this. Okay. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Move. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Those in favor signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move to six I. Consider approval of a change order to the construction contract of the ongoing twenty twenty-two street paving project number one in the amount of seventy-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars. Mr. Offerman.
Mayor, City Council, Case Offerman, Assistant Public Works Director and Assistant City Engineer, asking you tonight to consider approval of a change order of the, to the ongoing twenty twenty-two street paving project number one in the amount of seventy-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars. Little background here, you'll remember that within the past few months, we have awarded two separate contracts to Drury Construction, one for the twenty twenty-two Seal Coat Project and one for the twenty twenty-two street paving project number one. As a reminder, the twenty twenty-two Seal Coat Project was a rebid of a project from last year, which we had to cancel due to unavailability of materials. So, that should be starting in the next week or so. But the, the twenty twenty-two street paving project has been going on for about a month, and they're, they're getting close to the end on that. Logan's Port Street was on the twenty twenty-two Seal Coat Project list. We've got the, no, we don't. There it is. We've got the map here showing that it's part of the thirty-four streets that were on that Seal Coat Project list. Since the, since the development of that project, however, the weather, the, the condition of the street has deteriorated on Logan's Port Street to the point where staff feels that it needs to alter its recommendation from a seal coat, which is more of a, a, it's more of a temporary repair. It gets you probably ten years down the road on a street for a fraction of the cost. We feel like doing a seal coat at this point on this particular street would only gain us probably five years or less. So, for the investment of twenty-eight thousand dollars, we'd probably be back with Logan's Port Street on a paving list in the next five years. So, with the construction contract ongoing with Drury Construction, which has milling and inlay as a bid item already, we feel more comfortable bringing a recommendation to you to go ahead and just take Logan's Port off of the Seal Coat List and put it on the street paving list for that, for that other project that's ongoing and get probably twenty years or more down the road on Logan's Port Street. One other consideration involved in this is that we are also ready to begin a storm sewer, storm sewer project on Logan's Port Street as soon as funds are available. What this means is that if we get funding for this in the next few years, we, we would be coming back and cutting into that new pavement just to patch that, that trench that is required to make that installation across the street for the storm drain. So, what we have for you tonight are several options to consider. Option number one is to not provide any street improvements to Logan's Port until the storm drain project is completed. That would delete approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars from the Seal Coat Contract and would push improvements to Logan's Port Street to a year and a half or more out. Option number two is to continue with the Seal Coat as planned on Logan's Port Street. Again, that would probably only gain about five more years, maybe even less, of life on that street. And that would not require any, any change tonight. Option number three, which is staff's recommendation, would be to provide a complete mill and overlay on Logan's Port Street. It would delete the twenty-eight thousand dollars from the Seal Coat Contract, but it would add about a hundred fifty-one thousand dollars to the current street paving project. We do have unused chemical stabilization quantities in that paving project in the amount of about seventy-four thousand dollars, which brings that change order number cumulatively to that seven, seventy-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollar amount that we presented. And that would require a approval of, of city council tonight to make that happen. This would bring the new contract amount for the twenty twenty-two street paving project, number one, to one million six thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars, but that's still well within the, the amount that we have budgeted for this project. So. After public comment, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Could you put that first slide up right over?
Sure. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Can, Chase, can, can you talk about, so that the drainage project, where is it? And why couldn't we do that before we did the, did the paving?
Uh, well, when we developed the original Seal Coat Project, that was not something we had on our radar, per se.
The drainage?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Yes, sir. We started talking about the CO projects and stuff, you know, about a year ago. And this project list was developed about two, a year and a half to two years ago. So, at that point, the, the sewer project wasn't on the list yet. And so, it's just kind of one of those things where they overlap, and we see that from time to time. We try to, we try to plan these things out where we're doing utility repairs ahead of paving projects, but unfortunately, sometimes sewers or water lines blow up in the middle of our freshly paved streets, which is really my favorite thing ever. So, that's just kind of where we are on this one. It was, it was not foreseen at the time that we prepared this project originally.
And that cut is about where?
I don't, I don't remember the specific address. I'm thinking, is there a seven hundred Logan's Port somewhere? It's, it's right near Rush Street. It crosses right at Rush Street, which is, you know, a couple of blocks up from Park Street. I believe I'm saying that right. R-U-S-C-H-E.
I thought it was Ruski Street.
Rusi?
Rusi Street. So, whatever, whatever the council prefers.
I'm sure there's stories about.
I'm sure it's a last name, so I'd hate to get that wrong. But.
Do we need public comment?
Yeah, we do. I'm sure. Yeah, I just, any, and does anybody have any comment regarding it or a suggestion? Okay.
So, I, I think it's, I, I, I think it'd be much wiser to not have any improvements until the storms, storm sewer project is complete. I think we'd just be wasting our dollars. I don't know if we need a motion for that or if, just direction.
Well.
And I don't know if there's agreement, but it, it just makes sense to me.
So, if y'all, and, you know, Mr. Kirkland could speak to it, but I would imagine y'all make a motion with your recommended option, and then we will, we'll formulate cha- a deductive change order on the Seal Coat Project to that effect, to that effect, if that is the option you choose. Uh, twenty-eight thousand dollars. Nowhere near it. No, it shouldn't. I wouldn't think so.
Is there a differing opinion?
I just have a question.
Sure.
Do you want to go? Case, you said that the staff recommendation was option three. Could you, did you say that?
That was our, that was our recommendation.
Could you explain why?
Uh, you know, it's just the timing. This is a street that's quickly falling into significant disrepair. You know, we were trying to extend its life with the Seal Coat Project. Since we've gotten delayed with that by, by a year, it's, it's gotten significantly worse in that amount of time that we've noticed. And so, the, you know, it's, and some of the pictures there are evident, the, the edges are cracking off and significant chunks are coming out. And then that's just, that's just going to get worse. It would last. It would last another few years. It's not gonna, it's not gonna implode. But, you know, it's just going to continue to deteriorate to the point where it's just not comfortable at all. And so, our recommendation is to do it now. It could certainly wait another couple of years. It will be contingent on funding for that storm drain project. So, you know, we're not sure when that, when that could happen. But it, it could easily be a couple of years down the road.
The storm sewer?
The storm sewer and then the subsequent street repair. Yes, ma'am.
Because, what you said earlier was that the, that would delay this, not the street repair, but if you were to, to not do the, the Seal Coat, but the other thing, that you wouldn't be able to do it probably for another year and a half after the storm sewer improvements. Is that correct? Is that what you said?
So, what, let me be, let me explain a little bit better. We could Seal Coat it now, which would be within the next couple of months, because they're about to, from what I understand, they're gonna start here in the next couple of weeks on the Seal Coat Project. There's thirty-four streets on that project, and I'm not quite sure when Logan's Port would, would fall in that order. But we could expect this fall. I do expect this fall for that street Seal Coat Project to be completed. We are, they are almost wrapping up the current paving project. So, it would, if, if the option number three were to be the preference tonight, I would tell Drury Construction tomorrow that we've added, you know, Logan's Port to the milling list, and they would get out there probably within the next couple of weeks and mill it up and put a new surface on it. What would, what would take a couple of years is if we were to wait on the, the sewer project to be done, the storm sewer project. If, if option one is the preference, we would take it out of the Seal Coat List. As I stated, we wouldn't do it in the paving project. We would wait until, you know, the street, I mean, I'm sorry, I keep saying street. The, the storm sewer project is completed, which, based on funding, could be, you know, a year or two years down the road. So, if we were to wait until then, then, yes. So, uh, if we were to wait until then, then, yes ma'am, it would be two or three years at least down the road before we could get the street paved. If we were to wait until after the storm sewer project.
But these holes would be patched, I guess, wouldn't you?
They would be patched, uh, but, you know, potholes uh being filled only last as long as a eighteen wheeler drives over them, so. Uh, they do tend to pop out, um, they are temporary repairs by definition, so. Uh, they could, they could last a few months, or they could last a few weeks, depending on the circumstances. But we would, uh, in the event that we didn't do anything at this time, we would endeavor to at least keep the potholes filled as best we can, uh, with the understanding that it's nowhere near a, a good fix. So.
So I guess my question is, if we proceeded with option three?
Yes.
And then we have a storm sewer repair that comes up, how much more are we talking in having to repair the street when we do have to do that? I mean, are we talking significant cost between doing it now or doing it after?
S- well, significant in, you know, in terms of the price of asphalt will go up. Uh, as far as the cost of the patch itself, it's probably a eight to ten foot wide trench at the most, so. And it's just the width of the street, so, um, you know, a few thousand dollars to patch it. Um, but, uh, you know, it will, and they'll patch it back as, as flush as they can. Uh, but it may settle a little bit, which they may have to, you know, keep leveled up. But, um, it will, the main point is it will not be a uniformed street surface after that. But it, you know, we've got trench repairs all over the place on s- streets after we have to repair a water line or install a sewer line or, or, you know, improve something, so.
I'm, I'm just not a fan of patching. And that's why I would uh agree to option three because aesthetics, it's gonna look so much better, and it's gonna last so much longer.
Okay.
So.
So to be clear, there will be a patch down the road, uh, for the trench repair, just so that that's clear.
Okay.
Which one is the patchless one, one?
One, and, you know, that, it will still be patched in the meantime, but the ultimate repair will, would take it all off, and we will never go back with a seal coat recommendation on this street at this time. Uh, or three years down the road, it will, we will recommend a milling inlay next time if we don't do it right now. So, um, the, the main difference is, uh, do y'all want to repair it now and then have that street patch later for the storm? And, and it will only be a certain, cause it's a, it's a, it's a perpendicular cut across the road, it's not the full length of Logan's Port Street, it's, it's, it's really just that one area. So the, the whole street, you know, for the next two years or more will be great. And then after they come in and have to install that, that pipe, uh, there will just be a, a patch, which will, uh, you know, initially be flush and, but over time it may settle just a quarter of an inch or so, but.
Um, what are the different total costs to the city?
Okay.
What is the total cost to the city for number one, the total cost to the city for number two, and the total cost, you know, after all is said and done, and number three?
Okay, so.
And I'm talking about coming back and patch, whatever, that's really what I was looking at.
Okay, uh, hard to tell at this point what the differences in cost would be for future work. Um, I can tell you if we, if we do the, um, the milling inlay right now and take it off of the seal coat list, we're gonna take twenty-eight thousand dollars out of the seal coat project. We are going to add seventy-seven thousand dollars to the paving project. So you've got a net fifty-ish thousand dollar adder uh for doing milling versus seal coat right now. Uh, patching it back a few thousand dollars, you know, down the ro- a couple of years down the road. Um, if we wait and don't do anything, asphalt price alone has gone up twenty percent in the past year. So we don't know what it's gonna do in two years. Um, but I would expect for the cost of the milling to not be a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, I would expect it to be higher than that. So, um, I believe your cheapest alternative would be to do it now. Without having any future data to go off of, uh, future pricing nailed down or anything like that. But I would only anticipate the price going up from here.
How far down the street, um, is all this milling inlay going to be?
It would be all of the existing uh street uh down to the park entrance. Just replacing the existing surface. And just to be clear, for those who may not know what a milling inlay is, I haven't exactly uh explained what that is. Uh, basically, a milling inlay is to, they come on with a, with a milling machine, they take off the top two inches or so of the surface and then just put it back with new asphalt. So, the street surface will be, um, close to what it is, but, um, they may take off a, a few more inches, cause it looks like it's already had enough, an overlay on the street before, so. Uh, maybe, maybe milling three inches or so, and then putting back a surface just in, in its place.
So there's some dirt, you know, surface, I think, uh, on the way down to the park, will that be included?
No, no ma'am, just the asphalt surface, yes ma'am. And, you know, I say down to the park, but, you know, it's, I consider the park entrance where that dirt starts, myself. The, the existing asphalt is what would be taken up and put back.
There's no easy answer to that one. You stand by your opinion?
Yeah, just because it's good to have the whole street looking the same and, and, uh, just do it once. I mean, that's, that's just my preference, but I'm not, I won't cry if we don't do it. If we do it some other way, it's okay with me.
So I, I did mention, uh, and this is just for my own benefit here, um, I did mention that sewer lines and water lines do tend to break in this town. So if we do repave Logan's Port and we have a water line break and we have to patch it, just would like that out there, on the record, that we may have to patch it at some point for something.
You know, I've seen these uh storm sewer lines come in, and I've seen things that happened like right after it, so I'm not really sure.
Like I said, it's my favorite day ever.
It's old, you know, I mean, right on Park Street, we've, I think you hit it what, three times in one year, so I'd almost like to see it. See what happens after the, after that, that, yeah, cause that's a major project, I'd like to see what happens after that.
Yes ma'am.
But that's, again, I won't cry.
Understood.
To bolden.
Um, I'm, option three.
I, I have a slight preference for option three because it seems like the m- most fiscally conservative, or the one that'll, that'll save more money in the long run. But I also do not feel super strongly one way or another, and will also not cry.
I guess I'll say that I, I share that preference, but this money is already budgeted in our current fiscal year budget. So we don't have to worry about budgeting for it in the future if we take care of it now. And if we have a, a tent, you know, even an eighteen inch thing that we have to go back and pave over later. Uh, I know everyone's driven down that street recently, it's terrible. I mean, so my preference, and I won't cry either too much, uh, is to, to move forward with option three.
I'm the same, so there's, well, option three, is that okay? We'll let the vote on that one.
Yes.
Yeah. Do you have a motion?
Give me a second, unless somebody else wants to. I make a motion that we approve item six I with option three in the amount of seventy-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars.
A second.
Got a second, any further discussion? Those in favor signal saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? All right, we will, uh, go into executive session pursuant to Texas government code, section uh five fifty-one point oh seven. Four. And five fifty-one point oh eight seven at, uh, seven oh nine. We are returning from executive session at eight.
Oh three?
Eight oh three. Uh, from, uh, sections five fifty-one point oh seven two and five fifty-one point oh seven four, uh, with no action, we're adjourned.